Well, welcome to tonight's special board meeting. And if we could start the meeting by standing and saying, "Pledge allegiance."
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so tonight we have Terry McCloskey calling in remote. And so there are five board members here for tonight's meeting. If I could have the administrative report on agenda posting and notification of the meeting to the media.
Certainly. The agenda was posted at Three Lakes School, Sugar Camp School, the town of Sugar Camp, the town of Three Lakes, and the town of Monaco. Media notified included the Villas County News, the Northwoods River News, WRJO News, WXPR Radio, and WACD, WATK Radio.
All right, very good. Thank you for that. Are there any amendments?
No.
None? All right. I will seek approval for the tonight's agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right. Motion, Colette, second by Josh. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed? None heard. Motion passes 5-0. Moving on to public comments. Hearing... Hear comments from visitors regarding agenda items. Would anyone wish to speak to any agenda item tonight? And... Okay. I don't have to ask you which items, so silly ones.
Don't have a lot of choice. First of all, I just want to make a comment that it's very hard to comment on items that haven't been discussed. So I'm making a guess. I'm assuming what you're going to talk about. And I apologize if I am asking a question and making a comment about something that you intended to talk about anyway. Under that new business approval of the conceptual site plan, I guess I want to understand exactly what a conceptual site plan is, what purpose it serves. And my... The reason I ask that is because I want to be sure that when the board goes to making a decision about approving that, that you're all understanding the purpose of that document and how it fits into the process moving forward. And so I hope that you discuss what a conceptual plan is, that term, and then how it fits into any future planning that might happen. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Moving on to new business. We have consider approval of the conceptual site plan on the School Forest Highway A property. Do you like to start us off?
Sure. When we met last month, we talked about a lot of things, but we really focused on the visual of the maps and the plans. And we had Phil with us, Phil Kiesel from MSA. And he really helped us with Justin leading us through a lot of the questions that we had had. And knowing that it took us a little bit of time to get through this and that we want to really make sure that we have our questions answered before we go with the next step, which the next step is changing over from what is conceptual to actually identifying this is the plan, the footprint that we're working within. Once we have that footprint, as I call it, totally not engineering jargon, so you fix it what it should be, then we can go forward with, these are the next steps. I really believe that as a board and as myself, as the district administrator and Justin as our principal and our lead contact on this, we have to be able to say, okay, this is what we firmly know. And then we can start approaching what's next. What permits do we need? Is it still a go? Is this okay? As we talked, as Justin mentioned last month, you know, wetlands. The DNR, they are our friend and neighbor and stewards of the environment. They're going to be very involved. There's some things that we have to be prepared for that we can do and some things that may not be a go. So we have to adjust and alter our plans a little bit. The point that I really want to make is that this is not a project that is one piece of the three components done in isolation. A while back, we approved our conceptual plan for the usage of the property. Tonight, we're talking about the site. We're talking... Last time, we talked about the usage. And the usage were those three components, that it would be for the educational outdoor curriculum component. It would also involve the trail system that we want to develop. And then ultimately, we're also including in this land the location of the trap range. And I believe through a lot of talking, research, figuring, and readjusting that we believe that the three can coexist happily together if we do a good job of planning, if we do a good job of writing policy, thoroughly looking at the potential what-ifs. And in fact, it's become more and more clear to me that the trail system and the outdoor educational component truly are married together. Because the trails are going to give us the access to the different learning stations. And when Justin did his work on what do the teachers want to see available and accessible, wow, it just kind of exploded. The ideas in the curriculums are many, to the point that some are already writing their curriculum and getting it going. There is true enthusiasm. We did say that we would like a go date for the school component by September 1. That is a very aggressive timeline. That is still something that we think with, you know, elbow grease and work this summer, we could be potentially ready to have our kids out there for the educational component in the fall of this year. So I say that as setting the stage because that brings us to tonight with really solidifying where the placement of the trap range would be, how the accessibility with the parking lot in the driveway would exist, where the potential would be for putting that porta potty and putting a pavilion up. Again, keeping in mind someday, it may not be a pavilion outdoor structure. It could be a true classroom structure with flushing toilets and the whole bit. But that's down the road. We have to get a starting point. And that's what tonight is kicking off.
Yep. Identifying where goes... Where everything goes.
Correct.
So... So, who's next? Justin?
Can I go?
Hand it off to you.
You gonna use a screen here?
I will, a little bit, I'm sorry. Do we have... Do they have paper copies?
I can hand them out. Which one do you want to go out right now?
I would say, no, no, the one from this morning.
This morning's?
Yes.
I have it right there.
And I have to say that before we get going, I'm looking at some drawings up here. Phil is probably sick of drawing this piece of property because we've tried so many different tweaks and modifications to try to get the best one, including some real recent ideas that Phil turned around for us in a matter of few hours to tweak it to what I think, in my opinion, is probably the best one we've seen thus far. This brings us back to the conversation of a month ago. Okay? This is sort of... Now, the green line represents the walking trail. And as you know, this is based off of the sketch and the meanderings of Mr. Grossman in regards to some of the great... And we have learning stations, again courtesy of John Grossman, all inventoried via photos so that we can start to... We can start to educate staff as to what's all out there. Some of them know. Some of them have been following this very closely. But at any rate, we have not only... In the plan for that trail is, like Terry indicated, a fairly quick timeline because we want to have it going by September, pending your approval, obviously, the green light. But also, we have in the works the ability to, as soon as this is a go, I can share the things that John has already shared with me as far as those... I'll show you for a second. Back to... All of these numbers, all around, in all the little spots, they're digital photos that John already has that we can share with staff, literally, as soon as we get the green light, to start to plan where their... Where their lessons are taking them. And the spots that are out there are already aligned pretty well with what they have in mind for some of our more trips earlier in the school year next year. Also, John's been so kind. You know, obviously, schedules have to align and things like that. But he has committed to, if ever we need him, to do in-service time with staff and/or maybe get in front of our kids. He's willing and he's sometimes just right next door. So... But this is the... This is the sketch that Johnny had together. And you see the green line roughly...
We will do a survey so we know where those lines are. The east line will start at the property line. And if there's any overlap, it would be on the west side of the property. And if you decided you didn't want to put in the third range, you could leave that off. And then everything would be on your property. But those are safety zones, not shot ball zones. So they're much wider than the shot would be. Your angles, if you look at, there's some smaller triangles inside. Those are the target triangles. That's a legal target. Your shot is going to most likely be in and around that. And we're only going to clear to the edges of the yellow. So you're going to have trees beyond that. So for shot to get to those property lines, it'd be very, very, very difficult for it to ever get that far just from the trees that are going to be there. But those are the safety zones that are required when you lay out a trap field. And I want to make sure that I'm showing you all of the safety zones. Other than that, that's, you know, if you have, you know, something else you want for a parking lot, I just want you to see you have parking lot. You know, there's a little bit bigger dip on the bottom of the parking lot where there's kind of parking stalls that are kind of in a free air. That parking lot is extended down there so that when you get deliveries of targets, they'll probably be by a semi truck. And a semi truck can make the turnaround inside of there. Otherwise, they have to bring... Because they come out of pallet, you're going to have to deliver them someplace else and then bring them out with a pickup or something like that. This will allow, you know, ultimately, when you have a storage facility there, some sort of small garage or something that you could put targets in, the semi truck could come in, drop targets, and away you go.
So there's enough space for the buses to turn around?
Yes.
Great. I actually think that this... I went out and I actually measured from camp to, and that driveway location is almost exactly where it is right now. It was 700 feet from camp to. And just judging by the trees that you can see, it's almost exact right now. And what that actually, I think, opens up too is if we ever wanted to, if we needed to create some sort of a turnaround space for the buses, for the larger vehicles, we might be able to incorporate that as well.
We could incorporate that right away if that's something...
Well, and it might be... Just, I'm just saying, it's just optional.
Yep. We could make the parking lot, instead of having the dip, and we could bring it back around. That's a great idea, too.
Which this layout actually helps with now that we're kind of out of the way of those trees a little bit more.
Yep. Yeah.
Thank you for all the time you've spent on this, Phil.
No problem.
Appreciate it.
I really want to see you guys have a trap field. And I'm a coach in Rhinelander, so we don't compete against you guys. But I'm a big proponent of the sport of traps. So helping you guys is pretty awesome to me.
Very good.
I won't mention any names, but I had one of our neighbors over here on this side connect with me a couple days ago, wondering if he would be able to... He's not at the meeting here. He's still in Arizona for the winter. I don't blame him for that. You act well, maybe. He is interested in spearheading, provided we get a green light. He'd love to spearhead the trail project or work on the trail project with John's assistance. So that was neat to hear.
Lot of enthusiasm.
There is. There really is. I've been floored by that.
Yeah. Yeah. Appreciate the time that John put into it and putting all those photos together and noting some of the characteristics of the property that are unique and definitely worthy of sharing with our young people, so...
Yes. And I was also reminded, in connection with one of our neighbors of this parcel, that the property owners on this end have verbally told him that they're more than willing to allow for us at some point. Obviously, we would reconnect and get official note on that. But they would be very in favor of us expanding our trail system to go north and into a very expansive chunk of property, which is exciting when I see. I mean, I hope that if any... If it's any indication, the amount of educators who are chomping at the bit to get out there with their classes right now, we may be at a spot where authority isn't holding us. Right? Like, we can... I'm not saying in terms of too many kids out there at once. I'm saying that, you know, by the time kids get to fourth and fifth grade, they'd be like, yeah, I've been here, done that. Let's explore some more. You're right, 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 right. So, you know, I'm thinking of the spot where we... Some of us used to take our kids out at catwalk. That's a little bigger chunk of property. And that would be more indicative of, you know, if we can have a trail that goes into... You just get, the more meandering trails you have, the more features you can see for kids, so...
Lot of opportunity, right?
That's a future thing. That's not an initial. That's not today. But that's just, keep that in mind as we move forward.
Okay. Perfect. We'll get out of the way. Any other questions, board members? Okay, so at this point, we did move from where we were last month to a few tweaks here with the parking lot, aligning itself with the existing driveway. And which absolutely makes perfect sense. So... We've got that driveway in place. And now we can make use of it lining in with the parking lot. If we need to do some tweaks in terms of turnarounds or whatever like that, that can be done, really, at any point, right?
One nice thing about with where the driveway is on the picture that is up right now that everybody's looking at is, when we went there and we looked at this property, this is the area that we were looking at. This is that clear spot. I mean, we can see this way. We can actually visualize it on what our options are and what we would be looking at doing.
Yep. Okay. Anything else to add?
Well, can I give you a few comments on policy?
That would be great.
Okay. I did speak with Scott Mikesch this past week. I speak with him frequently. But I just wanted to reiterate, you know, where we were and what this meeting was going to be. And if you recall at our last meeting, we talked about a lot about the seasonality with policy, days, time. And he actually said that he felt very confident. He's already been working on it. And it's kind of like a team project right now with a couple of the other attorneys. But they really support us making a plan that when, as Phil said, the trap range is in use, the rest of the pine forest is shut down. And to the point that the policy is going to reflect that, not only in the seasonal verbiage, but it's also going to reflect that in March 15 through May 15 of the date. There will be no activity by school personnel other than dedicated to the trap club on Mondays, Wednesdays. And then it'll be written in with the discretion of the authority of the district administrator that I can add additional dates. For instance, let's say Rhinelander did want to have a competition. If something happened with the athletic directors and they wanted to have, you know, a small group on a Saturday morning, we don't want to break our own policy. So we want to make sure we have that very clear, that we can control that. Charlie Volk mentioned last month, which I also want to reiterate, I still see this as going under a facilities reuse request. We would always have that in place because that makes sure our insurances are in place. It's very well aware that no one else should be out there. You know, it's just another level of safety and security that I think we have to keep in mind. We also are going to be quite expansive. And as I mentioned before, it's going to be a long policy. And there's probably going to be several parts to it because we also want to think about what if we want to partner, for instance, with the DNR and do trap and gun safety. We don't want to be breaking our own policy by allowing our kids to be holding a shotgun for training because it's a Saturday morning and it's not a trap club event. We have to think about all of that first. So that's in the works, too. So I feel very positive and confident about this because really have worked over the what-ifs in looking at the, not only the federal, but the state and the interpretation. Because we never want to be in a situation where a student completely and innocently involved in trap or for whatever reason could be under an expulsion law because of a shotgun being on school property. I think we got that really figured out. It's not going to be overnight. Like I said, it's in the works. We're going to look at that. We're going to look at it a lot. So probably get a little sick and tired of it. But that's what you do when you're developing accurate policy. And so I just, I felt very good about that. And I wanted you to know how that's progressing. And as I said, we don't have to have one child set foot onto that property until we have our policies in place. It's not like they're going out next week and, oh, no, what's going to happen? That's not going to happen. Trap range season now, we're not looking till basically a year from now. You know, it's 11 months, so we've got time. Did you have any further questions on policy where we're at with that at the moment?
No, that'd answer the big question for me, so that's good information.
Okay, great.
Okay. Anything else to add, Terry?
I just, I'm really very happy with the way things have been going with this project. I feel that, number one, when you say the guy, I think Justin has proven himself to be the guy. He really has taken it on and done it very, very well. It is so important to me that we are completely transparent and open, not only with our community members and, you know, our district constituents, but our neighbors. We've said right from the start, we want to be good neighbors with those who are surrounding us. And I really feel that we've made a lot of strides that way. And I want to just keep that message open that it's our intention as a district to keep that relationship moving forward and always in place. That's what I've got.
All right. Yeah, and as far as the good neighbor thing, not only is it a positive thing for a trap facing north, but also noise as well, that is moving forward in a direction that is forest, right?
A lot of it.
So a lot of thought was put into this here, no doubt. And incorporating the three land uses that we approved prior. We have conceptionally put this all on paper now. And the next step, pending approval here from the board, is we can start now and start taking what we have on paper and actually plotting it out on the land itself. Again, pending permits, et cetera, et cetera. But we've got a plan here that we can start with. And a lot of thought is put into getting us to where we are right here. So... Any other questions?
Yeah, Terry McCloskey. I was wondering, Justin, what kind of progress you've made on the name?
Yeah, that's a great question. We've got some ideas out there, Terry, as to how we go about that. But to be honest, I've been working more with... But to be honest, I've been working more with Phil and getting the drawing going. The name, to me, comes next along with, once a conceptual plan is approved, I think we can start getting on the potential fundraising and or connecting with the community that way. And I think those two kind of go hand in hand.
Thank you.
Yep. It's on our radar for sure.
Very good. Others?
I agree. We need to name it to get people excited. Get that marketing effort going to get our fundraising going.
It's on the radar, right?
Yes.
All right. Willing to make a motion?
I am, I would make a motion to approve the conceptual site plan or the coming A forest property.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion on the table and we're talking about this drawing.
We are talking about the 412 site design, 41222 site design, yes.
All right, so we have a motion by Josh, second by Stacy. Any further questions, comments?
I'm assuming that we're going to confirm the conceptual drawing, but then we'll go further on details on cost, funding, management, who's going to do what to whom and all that. That's the next phase, right?
That would be.
Okay.
Further explanation in that, Terry, at all?
No, actually, I have collateral preliminary questions that I've been working through. But yes, we have to have this in place so we can start the next. But as I just briefly mentioned to Mike, it can be a rather quick timeline. We don't have to wait indefinitely because that can get right in motion once this is agreed on.
So as far as a project manager, do you have someone in mind?
Well, I will tell you what I see that as. I see that as a couple of different people. First, I think you've got the district level. And I will say it's shared. I won't say it's just Justin or someone else. I see it as Justin is going to be doing a lot of the communication and like work, you know, with Phil or with teachers. But I do think ultimately, when we're talking about finances, it's going to be with the school business manager, Margot at this point, and myself. I feel that I have to be that key, critical, final say person before it comes to board because, you know, when we're writing checks or we're signing up people to do work, I want to be very aware and invested in all of that. And then when we go forward, as far as like a site management, when we get down, further down the road and we're looking at potentially, we would have some requests for proposals, like bids. For instance, I'll throw out there like a parking lot. You know, that will be determined at that time, based on what information we get, who is interested, what kind of bids come in and what we would decide would be the group that we would go with.
Yeah, I was thinking more site manager, who's in responsibility to make sure we have good upkeep, that we have schedules running well.
Oh, well, that type of thing.
Yeah, that's further down the line. I should mention too, which I didn't, Dave Kirby, he's not here this evening. He's been very involved in this right from the start. And he will continue to be so because I do see our crew that we have onboard with maintenance being very involved, especially during the summer months with, you know, they can't give all of their time to that, but ours here and there and working on the plan under Justin's guidance and direction.
And then up there, I put up, and you saw this document last month, that's the basic seven-step process that, from moving dirt, sort of. Those are the things that need to happen next. And just a reminder that the services of Phil to this point and moving forward, that we're talking about parking lot, we're talking about the driveway, the trap range, the walking trail, the access loop, that's on us. That's district. With probably some help.
So continuity with all of that?
Yes.
One more. The gun laws that allow us to have the shooting range, we've looked into that and we're okay with that.
Extensively. And that is going to be reiterated in the policies that are being developed.
Okay, good.
Good questions. Any others?
When can we start fundraising?
Right after the vote. How's that?
I'll have a bucket at the door on the way out.
All right, so we do have a motion and a second on the table. Last, any other questions? Everybody questioned though? I will call it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed, unheard. Motion passes by zero. Very good. And thanks to all that have put forth tremendous effort into getting to where we are right now. A lot has taken place thus far, but there's no doubt there's a few more things left to do, right? But it continues to be exciting. And I'm really looking forward to seeing our young people out there and utilizing this property in a way that I think a lot of people would envision initially, so. Very good. Three years? All in, so? Three and a half? Yeah, so, what's that?
May I make a request, Mike? When you post the minutes, could you post the diagrams so that we know what, when there's a reference to them in the minutes?
Yep, that'd be part of it.
That we see what you were looking at?
Yep. It would be referenced in the minutes, the drawing. Absolutely. Very good. I'll take a motion for adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All right, all of the favorites signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed, unheard. We are adjourned. Thank you all for joining us here today.